All right, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of Sharonville City Council, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you could please stand for a prayer and pledge allegiance by Mayor Hardman. So we have a couple of scouts here from, this is troop number fifteen ninety-eight. I'm gonna invite them to make their way over here to the microphone and say a very clear this pledge allegiance and put on the spot.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of our last meeting? Seeing none, those minutes will stand as written and approved, distributed. Report to Communications, Mayor Hardman.
Yes, first of all, Bear's Court report for the end of two thousand twenty-four, so December two thousand twenty-four, total revenue in that month was nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents. For the year was two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is about six thousand dollars more than two thousand and twenty-three. The full report and breakdown will be made part of the minutes for your review. Tomorrow, we will be hosting Visit Cincy's annual meeting and luncheon over at the Sharonville Convention Center, so we will be filling our Northern Lights Ballroom with folks that are involved in convention planning and meeting planning throughout our greater Cincinnati region, certainly an opportunity to highlight our facility and what is available to all of those that want to come visit northern Cincinnati and specifically the city of Sharonville and what we have to offer. So that's exciting to have that opportunity. Hopefully, we'll see some of you there. I know Jim is excited about what they've been able to do and has been sending pictures out of what our Northern Lights Ballroom looks like, all decked out for tomorrow's event, so that was certainly exciting. Other than that, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Couple items before we get into the legislation, I just wanted to thank Steve Bosom's crews for the last two snowfall events, when you have residents posting videos of how it looks in other jurisdictions neighboring us versus what Sharonville looks like. And they're positive videos. Kudos to your crews. In a similar vein, we're probably gonna have Sean Pan here from Truby Hilton for a Good Neighbor Award sometime in February. Sean, who is one of the owners in Truby Hilton, opened up his hotel for any police officer, firefighter, public works director, or public works director, public works employees who needed to get some sleep during the snowfall, as well as for anybody who was stranded on the highway that the police or fire department could assist. At least one of our officers took advantage of that, and at least one stranded motorist took advantage of that, so just thanks for Sean Pan for doing that. And again, we'll probably have him back at some point in February. Legislation-wise, I think there are seven items, six items for vote this evening. First one, ordinance two thousand twenty-five zero one E is a salary ordinance amendment that Rachel and/or Scott will be addressing.
So we became aware that there was an error in one of the, actually, the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four ordinances that address twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, specifically for pay grade B through merit and COLA increases. One of our positions was inadvertently overlooked, and we would like to request that pay grade B be, the range be extended.
Any questions? Thank you.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-two deals Arpa funds, and Scott's here to talk about that.
Good evening. This is a twenty twenty-five appropriation amendment. We fell short of having enough appropriations to spend the last of the police Arpa money in twenty twenty-four. This number actually kind of worked out somewhat conveniently. The fourth quarter, or the December pension responsibility for the Arpa officers actually approximates this remainder that we're asking to appropriate. So this will carry the, this will fulfill the police Arpa grant, so for now on, those Arpa officers, police and fire alike, are kind of in their respective department budgets. So, and this will put that grant behind us. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, Steve's here to talk about ordinance two thousand twenty-five zero three E and zero four E, very fitting, related to rock salt, the first one.
Yeah, remember how Jim complimented our crew, my crew, for the snow clearing? Twenty twenty-five zero three E is our yearly legislation authorizing the safety service director to enter into contract to purchase highway rock salt. It's really exciting. To date, though, actually, we have used a little over eight hundred ton to put that into perspective on these last two snowstorms in all of twenty twenty-four, so January through December, we used five hundred and six tons of salt, so. Twenty twenty-five zero four E is authorize safety service director to enter into contract to purchase some equipment for the Public Works Department. That equipment is a new Johnson Street Sweeper and dispose of our existing street sweeper. To acquire two Ford Maverick pickup trucks under the enterprise lease agreement and to dispose of two of our existing pickup trucks within the Public Works Department. We're gonna move around some of the existing vehicles in the enterprise lease to bring in two of the existing F-250s into the Public Works fleet and put these two Mavericks into the community development fleet. Have any questions on that one?
And then Steve's gonna answer some questions about if there are any, ordinance two thousand twenty-five zero five E, but what that does is it supports the Ohio Municipal League's effort to object to AT&amp;T trying to put cost onto the cities for municipal projects of relocating their utility lines. I don't know, Steve, you wanna get to any details about when that would, an example maybe of when that would happen and?
Yeah, my understanding of the Ohio Revised Code and with, when it pertains to utilities is if the utility, particularly on a pole, is in city right-of-way, and a city road project needed for roadway expansion or safety project requires the movement of that pole, the utility, the cost of relocating that utility is borne by the utility itself. The electric company, the AT&amp;T spectrum, they would bear the cost if that is, if it's in the right-of-way existing and is needed to be relocated within the right-of-way for a project of that nature. For a project that would be simply a streetscape beautification-type project where we are asking them to move their utility, whether it be underground or to a different pole line, the cities, municipalities are currently required to bear the cost of that relocation. But for projects where it is a necessity for the project, the utility has to bear the cost. My understanding of AT&amp;T's proposed tariff is they would have the ability to pass that cost no matter what reason for the move of the utility onto the municipality. So a safety project or a road widening project where it would normally be the cost of the utility, which is in our right-of-way for free as it is, would then charge us to relocate their utility for our project. The ordinance in front of you is, just as Jim mentioned, it's an objection to that. We're supporting Ohio Municipal League's objection, I believe is how the ordinance is. There is not a financial commitment from the city at this point with this ordinance.
So I don't really have anything to talk about this ordinance, but these, these young scouts over here, one of their, what they're here, they have to attend a meeting, and then they're supposed to answer a question, which is, talk about something that there was a disagreement about at the meeting and which side they would fall upon and why with regard to that. I don't anticipate that anyone up here is going to disagree with this resolution or anything else that's on our agenda tonight, which is pretty much what happens ninety-five percent of the time with regard to the stuff that we work on as a city, because we're pretty cohesive in working out what we want to see happen and have similar visions about the city. But this is probably a good one that you could discuss, because whereas we as a city don't want to bear the cost of burying AT&amp;T's lines for projects that we have to do because it's a necessity, like building a road or things along those lines, the folks at AT&amp;T don't want to spend the money to relocate their lines, so there is a disagreement that exists, so that might be the issue that you guys can discuss as part of your obligation to get your badges, just to help you out on that front. Because I was struggling with trying to figure out what we might be able to share with you tonight, but that's probably a good one, because there are certainly members of the public, but specifically corporate entities like AT&amp;T, that very much would like to see us bear the burden, the cities and its taxpayers, of relocating their transmission lines when projects take place within the city, and that costs a lot of money for them as well as for us if we were to have to do it, so.
So more technically, what the ordinance does is that it gives the Ohio Municipal League standing to object to the Public Utilities Commission going forward with what AT&amp;T want them to do. Ohio Municipal League in and of itself does not have standing to object to this, so they need municipalities to sign on to the objection in order to give the Ohio Municipal League the authority or the standing to object, and so they were asking for multiple municipalities. And I would hope that not only Sharonville participates, but multiple municipalities participate, and that's a more technical reading of why we should do this.
And this current tariff is AT&amp;T, but should it pass its spectrum, its Duke, it would be any number of utilities that would then likely jump on the bandwagon or try to. Any questions?
Thank you.
And then Chief Sutterman's here to talk about a grant that we received.
I, we received a grant for some thermal imaging cameras from Firehouse, and I do want to clarify, even from Law Committee, Mr. Lucas had a question, we were in Law Committee discussing the grant, the next thing he saw was a few imaging cameras, even though there were no matching funds with this grant. So the total project is about thirty-two thousand dollars for all of the cameras. The grant has never funded that much money, so we only asked for as many cameras as the max of the grant, so that is, so while we did get the grant and it, there are no matching funds, it does not cover the entire project. So with the grant, total of twenty, twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars, that will get us sixteen seat cameras that are considered situational awareness, so that will, every SDA, every firefighter. The additional cameras that we will be buying with out of our capital funds are what we call decision-making cameras, it's a bigger camera that has more capabilities for the lieutenants to carry. And the only thing I'd like to do publicly is thank Lieutenant Castile, this was all her work, finding this grant and doing the grant right. And thank you, scouts, I was sitting right there about forty years ago, so glad to see you're here.
Were there any questions for the chief?
That's all for the legislation.
All right, thank you. From my report, I just wanted to thank the first responders and Public Works for doing such a great job over the last two snow events. I got a lot of feedback, positive feedback from residents, both in Facebook messages, people calling me or texting me saying what a top-notch crew we have all around, so thank you to police officers, firefighters, and Public Works for being out there twenty-four hours a day and making our city the great place that it is. And I'd also like to thank everybody here on council for serving with me in twenty twenty-five and look forward to working with you this year. So that's it for my report. Clerk of Council, Ms. Bu height.
Just wanted to remind everybody to start working on those financial disclosure statements that are due. Thank you.
Was the Ethics Commission your reminder too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Certainly echo what my colleagues have said about the snow events. We will have a Records Commission meeting, January twenty-eighth, before council at six thirty PM. I think Mr. Lucas is gonna take care of letting department heads know about that so they can change their public record retention schedules if needed. Second thing I got, Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-three point six-two requires an annual report from the Director of Law at the first regular meeting of council. So very briefly, the total for Mayor's Court, I know Mayor Hardman's been giving monthly totals, but the annual total for two thousand twenty-four was one thousand three hundred and fifty-six new cases within the calendar year. That included seventy-five criminal misdemeanors, one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight traffic charges. The other remaining cases consisted mostly of code enforcement, tax filing charges. Fourteen of those cases were transferred from Mayor's Court to either Hamilton County Municipal Court or Butler County Area Three Court. We've got that stretch of Sharonville that's in Butler County, and I think we had one or two cases go up to Area Three. There were a number of pieces of settled litigation within twenty twenty-four. Philip Mink had two cases with the city of Sharonville, the first of which was a ADA claim through federal court, and Mr. Mink ended up accepting the suggested settlement amount and closed that claim out. The other claim was an appeal of a Board of Zoning Appeals decision, the magistrate issued somewhat of a split decision where she found that there were prior non-conforming uses, and that's a zoning way of saying that he was doing something before we made it illegal. We won on the separate counts having to do with the International Property Maintenance Code, so that was a good way to close out that case. We had the win against the Liquor Control Commission in the Franklin County Common Police Court. That final brief was filed on January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, and we did not get a decision in that case until March thirteen, two thousand twenty-four. And so that affirmed the earlier decision, but that decision was appealed up to the Tenth District up in Franklin County, Ohio. So that's a piece of pending legislation, I'm sorry, pending litigation. It is regarding Code Fifty-One. The technical parties involve the Liquor Control Commission, that's why it's called that, but it does involve the Code Fifty-One property. We also had two cases regarding the shared use path and the going up from downtown up to the Sharon Woods entrance there, and those were settled against EG Minor's properties, Sharonville LLC and Sharon Mobile Home Park LLC for the balance of our deposit, so that didn't have to get taken to trial, so that was good as well. And the deposit is what we place on, 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 on balance that we think the property is worth, so it ended up settling for an amount that was amenable to the city of Sharonville in both instances. The only other pending area of litigation is anticipated litigation revolving the Sharonville Convention Center, and I think everybody's abreast of that. If anybody's got any questions, feel free to approach me, or I can try to field them now. Thank you.
All right, seeing no questions, at this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? Mr. Schmidt?
My name is Tim Schmidt, one-two-two-one-five Picklick Place. First off, since I haven't seen, I guess, all of you since last year, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Secondly, it's been brought up, I'd like to thank those involved in clearing the streets. I know it was long hours and hard work, and they did a wonderful job, and I just want to thank them for that service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents this time? Seeing none, Council Committee reports, Community Development, Mr. Tankersley?
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to start off and thank everybody for the phone calls from my little accident that I had for Christmas. Community Development had a meeting last Wednesday, and as of right now, I don't have anything for the next one, so again, that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. No report for Budget and Finance, but the next Budget and Finance meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at six PM in the Administrative Conference Room. And then moving on to Project Oversight, no report, but the next meeting of Project Oversight will be Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, at six PM in the Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Services, Mr. Lovett?
Thank you, good evening. Report is on file in this Bu height. I do want to resound the sentiments of Mr. Bosom and his crew. I have a friend of mine who works utilities, and he was out all night long, and he said every time he drove through Sharonville, it was a breath of fresh air, because he knew he wasn't gonna fall off the road, so they did a wonderful job, they were very appreciative of it, so thank you, first team. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February fifth, at four PM in the Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Honored citizens, Ms. Knight?
Um, yes, also, I'd like to honor the Public Works Department for keeping our roads so awesome, but I also like to honor all the Sharonville citizens who went out of their way to help some of their elderly neighbors, cleared their driveways, cleared their sidewalks, so I just want to throw a thank you so much for thinking of your senior citizens out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, first thanks Public Works again, as we've done in the past, and also to thank all the neighbors who help each other, because there were a lot of people out shoveling their cars in the driveways. It was very, very refreshing to see all the neighbors helping each other. Thank you very much. The next Law and Public Safety Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, the twenty-first, at five PM, it's an hour later, five PM in the Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, rule suspension motions for the first and only reading for immediate effectivity of ordinances, twenty twenty-five dash oh-one dash E, twenty twenty-five oh-two, twenty twenty-five oh-three E, twenty twenty-five oh-four E, twenty twenty-five oh-five E, and twenty twenty-five oh-six E. Is there a motion for rule suspension for those ordinances? Mr. Lovett, thank you for the first, Ms. Knight, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Rule suspension passes. All right, unfinished business, Ms. Bu height?
Sure. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four seventy-seven, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Sharonville, Ohio.
Thank you. Move on to new business, Ms. Bu height?
Okay. First and only reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-one E, amending the salary ordinance to revise pay grade B and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-one dash E? Mr. Cook, thank you for the first, Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-one E has been approved, first and only reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two, amending twenty twenty-five appropriations for various funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-two? Mr. Cox, thank you for the first, Mr. Lovett, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-two has been approved, first and only reading of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-three E, authorizing the safety service director to enter into a contract to purchase highway rock salt for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six winter season to replenish the city's salt inventory and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-three dash E? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first, Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five oh-three E has been approved, first and only reading of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-four E, authorizing the safety service director to enter into a contract to purchase Public Works equipment, dispose of Public Works equipment, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-four dash E? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first, Mr. Cook, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-four E has been approved, first and only reading of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-five E, an ordinance of the city of Sharonville supporting the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-five dash E? Mr. Cox, thank you for the first, Ms. Knight, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-five E has been approved, first and only reading of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-six E, authorizing the safety service director to accept a grant related to thermal imaging cameras and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-six dash E? Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the first, Ms. Knight, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-six E has been approved.
Thank you. And at this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council? It's your last chance tonight. Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
I just want to introduce myself, I'm Charlotte Nicole Von Stein, otherwise known as Nikki Von Stein, resident ten-six-fifty Robindale Drive, also owner of Charlotte Nicole's Studio of Dance. Want to say a big shout-out thank you to our Public Works, our firefighters, go red, sorry, my husband's firefighter, we love you blue too, we love the police too. Just want to do a quick shout-out for my business, I know it's a CIC business issue right now, but we have put in our proposal for Cliffs Hardware, and anybody who wants to, we have a video online that we did share with the CIC, if you want to check that out on our Facebook page, it is up and running if you'd like to check it out yourself. Thank you so much, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Can I ask what your Facebook page is?
It is Charlotte Nicole Studio, Charlotte Nicole's Studio of Dance. And we also have a website, charlaternicolestudio.com.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, are there any other matters to be? Are there any other matters to be heard before council this evening? Ms. Sharpshare.
Okay. I just want to reiterate, Stephen, and all of your Public Works Department, I traveled to other counties over the winter snow that we had, and it was like night and day. You knew right where Sharonville ended and the next city began. So, kudos to all your workers and, and all their hard work. We really, really appreciate it.
Ms. Knight?
Yes. On a personal note, my mother's birthday is on Saturday. She'll be ninety-five. She's probably not the oldest Sharonville resident, but she's probably close to it. So, I just want to do a shout-out to her. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
I just wanted to close the meeting with a little thought. A number of years ago, when we had another snow emergency, one of the commentators on one of the stations says, said, "It must never snow in Sharonville because their roads are always clear." Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I had, I had one thing.
Oh, okay. Well, I jumped the gun.
Mr. Bosom, so I don't break your heart, I want to say thank you also to you and your crew for the wonderful job that they did.
Your door is, your door is closed. Sorry about that.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You have my vote, my, my first for adjournment?
All right. Do I have a second? Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the second. All those in favor of adjournment, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Thank you. We are adjourned.